This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for May 25th, 2021. Please take note that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District, in response to the continuing emergency circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and consistent with the New York State Governor's executive orders, including but not limited to Executive Order 202.1 and its subsequent, is conducting its public business meeting this evening, May 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, held via Zoom and available on the district website via the webinar function. In a moment, we are going to offer the public, who may be with us live on Zoom, the opportunity to participate in public comment. If you wish to make a comment or ask a question of the Board of Education this evening, I would ask you to please go to the chat feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen and put your name and your address in, and we will call on you shortly during public participation opportunity. I will also remind folks that public participation is limited to approximately three minutes per participant. You may ask a question, you may offer a comment, you may make a statement. Generally speaking, we do not answer questions. If it's something we can do simply, we will. If not, we will get back to you. We, if there's something specific that you wish to discuss in detail, please contact me directly or contact Dr. McGowan, and we're happy to discuss an individual issue that way. Public participation is not really a dialogue or a forum. You're also welcome to contact any board member or Dr. McGowan directly via email. All of our contact information is on the website also. You can send comments or questions directly to Board Clerk, District Clerk, Kim Lanza-Fame. Again, her contact information is also on the website, and we would get back to you with any further information that you require or to answer any questions further. So at this point, I guess, Dr. McGowan, do we have anybody listed that wishes to speak to us in public session?
We do not.
Okay, then at that point, then, we will move on, and I will seek approval of the agenda from our board.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Karen. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. And as we approve the agenda, I will make note that for attendance purposes this evening, Board Member Andrea Castanza is not with us. Another commitment, and so there are six of us here this evening. Board members, a motion, please, for approval of minutes for the May 11th, 2021 Business Meeting, and also the May 18th. They are, that's the actual documented minutes of the annual meeting and the board election and the vote process of the 18th. So a motion, please, for approval on those.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Moved by Sue and seconded by Christina. Does anyone have anything there to correct or make note or add for Kim? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six in favor, none opposed. Tonight, we have principal reports, and we look forward to that, as always, and we'll start out with Council Rock Primary School and Principal Matt Tatten.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I did it in the wrong order. I should have unmuted myself and then shared my screen. Good evening, and so great to be here tonight. So this is our eighth update as principals, which is exciting. So if you walk through our halls of Council Rock, you will see just artwork and poetry, a lot of great writing. This example actually comes from Nicole Urelyes, who happens to also be on the meeting, but she is always just doing incredible work with the writing. So these are flower haikus that are inspired by Georgia O'Keeffe. This one caught my eye just because of the bright and amazing artwork, but then they also did some reflection on the habits of mind that they used as they were doing this project. And so congratulations to all of Mrs. Urelyes' crew at second grade, but really, if you walk around, so much great art bursting in our hallways. Since our last meeting, we did celebrate Earth Day. Earth Day was celebrated in a variety of different ways. Here are just a few examples around the building. A lot of brainstorming of what students can do and giving students some ownership over how they can help make sure that our earth stays healthy, and so great projects everywhere. We are in deep into our map testing and our spring assessments. With our remote learners, it's just one of the, another hurdle that we've had to kind of overcome and figure out how to do some of the assessments that we do with kids who are at home in different environments. I think a lot of parents have had kind of some eye-opening experiences to what their children are able to do through some of the assessments, but many, especially the spring of our remote teachers, have at least offered to have their students come into school and meet with them one-on-one to do some of the assessments, which has really provided, I've seen some very happy young people who recognize me from the screen, if that's the only place they've ever met me, but it's been really great to be able to see parents and, and students who haven't been into the buildings come in in a safe way, a controlled way, meeting one-on-one with their teacher and making sure that they're comfortable. If parents are not comfortable, we're finding other ways to do that, but it's just another great way to kind of be transitioning back to, to our in-person learning. So I also reported last time that Julia Cook, our author, was going to be visiting, and we had an amazing visit. So this is Julia, one of her famous phrases she uses, props, she just kept things so interesting and engaging. So she shared with us as educators that we say, listen, listen, listen a lot, and kids don't really know what listen means when they're at the primary age. So she teaches them all in, and she teaches them that means you lean in, that means you're really focused, and so this was one of her props, and I caught a great picture of it. But we had about 10 different student presentations that she did throughout two days, as well as staff session for our faculty meeting, where she talked about the joy of teaching and that it is an inside job and really trying to really reinvigorate and inspire our teachers who are, you know, tired and exhausted, but really finding the joy in these last several weeks of school. And then she offered a parent session, and that was really interesting and went down a lot of different paths, but I'm always was amazed how she could tie it right back to her PowerPoint and the way that she planned it. So, and then Dr. Rio and her amazing crew at French Road, we've started those second grade transition meetings to French Road. In these pictures, Dr. Rio is visiting all of the second grade classrooms to introduce her herself to them. Also, sharing a little bit about the bottom picture was a virtual orientation that she did via Zoom that was very well attended by students and their families to start to make that transition. We've got a lot more planned, and I won't take it away because I'm not sure if Dr. Rio is going to be talking about it. I don't want her to have to zoom through her slides. So Board Member Davis sometimes reports on this, but I'm not sure if you guys know that Council Rock has been under construction for the last several years, but I just wanted to share some really exciting developments. Probably the most exciting development for students was that the playgrounds have started to be constructed and put together. So you will, at any one time, see a line of students at the window watching the amazing construction and the workers putting that in this morning. So these were from last week, and the difference between last week and this morning, they've really done some amazing work. They're starting to actually put the, the filler in, the mulch, so that it will, they are hoping to be done, and I'm, I'm hopeful, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I'm hopeful before the end of the year, we may get to use a playground at Council Rock for sure next September, but I'm hoping that that would be a special surprise, especially for our second graders who have really been flexible and gone through a lot of their time at Council Rock. So they are paving and doing a lot of that work. This is the second, so there are two different playgrounds, and these are the construction of both of them. Very exciting. Second only to the playgrounds, really, oh, so that is the back playground, sorry, is that our library has really come to fruition, and it is complete, and the furniture is in, none of the books are in because that's going to have to happen over the summer, but here are just some pictures of the amazing library. And one of the things I want to highlight is that our librarian, Adele Motzkovichas, has kind of rethought how a primary school library should be, and is, I said, are you going to get in trouble with the library police because she's going against the Dewey Decimal System? But if you can see, hold on, I'm going to go back. If you can see down in this corner, the, the way that she's going to be displaying books is similar to those of us who will remember this, a record store, so that children will be able to flip through and see the covers of books because if they can't read the words, the cover is what's going to grab them, and everything is going to be categorized by, you know, the animals, the transportation, so it's not going to be traditional in the way that it's organized. It's going to really be organized because that's how our kids come in. Some of them will come in and say, can I have a Junie B. Jones book? And we'll have, you know, traditional shelving for that, but a lot of our kids come in and say, I really want a book about tigers. Can I have a book about tigers? And it's more by the categorization. So really excited about that, excited about what that is going to bring for our students and really for our staff too, to be able to have a space like this to really be at the center of our building, which is all about literacy, excuse me, and learning to read. Some upcoming dates. So this Friday is a half day for our K-5 students. For our students, kindergarten, it's going to be AM only. There will be no PM kindergarten this day, so no PM kindergarteners come at all. AM will come, and they'll be dismissed at their regular time at 11:00. First and second graders will be dismissed at 11:30. So I go back to the transportation idea. We normally dismiss somewhere and normally leave the parking lot at about 2:40 in a typical afternoon. So if you think at about 11:40, we'll probably be pulling out of our parking lot, so do a little bit of thinking and give yourself a little leeway on where that is in terms of when your child will arrive. If you have questions about that, you can always call Transportation. Monday, there is no school as we celebrate Memorial Day. So I told you a little bit about the transition to sec, from second to third grade. Dr. Rio and our staffs have planned in-person field trip for our in-person students on Thursday, June 3rd. We will be coming to Council Rock, but then we will be heading over to French Road. Students will have an opportunity to see a classroom, take a tour, answer some, or get some questions answered from Dr. Rio and Ms. O'Neill, as well as go out and play on their playground, which I know was a highlight for some of our second graders. We will also, if you look down at the bottom, on Wednesday, the 9th, on one of their asynchronous days, the students who are remote at Council Rock Second Grade will be able to go to Fraz on a different day. And then Tuesday, the 8th, we have what I'm calling our faux ice cream social. We can't do it in person, but we will have ice cream sold in the lot, and then I'll be releasing a video that night to hopefully give parents an even closer look at some of the exciting developments that are happening at Council Rock. And that is it for tonight.
Thank you so much, Matt, and thank you for sharing the look inside all the new in the library. Larry, our board member Larry Davis, shared with the board earlier today a whole set of pictures from construction and showed the library, and, you know, we were over there a while back and took a look at where things were, but for where, from there, what transpired since then is quite incredible, and it's just so, a number of board members had comments, but it's so inspirational, and so there's such joy over the celebration of opening that building new and welcoming an entire new group of students as full-time kindergartners in September, and it's just really phenomenal. I love the idea on the books, being able to find them from the front, and those of us that remember albums and searching, you're right, that is a good, good segue there, but thank you so much, and thanks for the look inside the building, and, and thank you to you and your team and really everyone at Council Rock. All of the difficulties in pandemic teaching and learning on top of a construction project nonstop, literally, for a couple of years, so a few years really, but, so thank you so much, and it's really coming all together now, and it's really magnificent, and for those of us that have taken a ride by or walked right at the outside, and Larry shares pictures with all of us, and it's just magnificent, and we can celebrate with everybody, including all of our neighbors who have really put up with quite a bit over there too, and as we, as we move to finishing, so thank you very much, we appreciate that. Let's move on then to French Road and Dr. Allison Rio.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're doing well tonight, and it was definitely great to see those pictures, and actually got to visit Council Rock last week when I was there for the second grade visits, and the pictures don't do the library justice. It is amazing. It was my favorite place to visit, and I loved it. So some updates from French Road for today, and we'll go through some different things happening around the building a bit here. So we shifted some of our field trips and thought about, some things we're able to do in person, which I'll talk about later on, but some we've shifted to take a different perspective, and one of the field trips, or one of the experiences that our fourth graders have is a transfer of energy conference through Bosse's, and we were able to continue that this year by incorporating our remote classes and partnering them up with an in-person learning class so that the kids were able to experience this transfer energy conference in a different way, but it really ties right into the science work that our fourth graders are doing around learning about the different types of energy and energy transfers, and it goes through eight different stations for them to do some experiments while being led through the conference by a teacher from Bosse's. So this is the other half of that class, so that was an in-person class and a remote class who also joined in as well. So that was a great experience for the kids that even though we were split up, they were still able to participate in that. And to cut, just kind of tie into some of the things that are still happening around our building remotely, it's really impressive and continues to just show the creativity of our teachers and the excitement of our students, but these are just some screenshots from Mrs. Hutter and Mrs. Whitick's fourth grade class, who created a Comic-Con to just share some of their graphic novels that they created, and they did that all through Seesaw, and it was pretty fantastic. I was lucky enough to be a participant and got to read through all of their graphic novels, but they really take the events and make them special for the kids. So I just put a couple of screenshots there of what they did for each child. They had them present like they were sitting at a table, and that was the cover of their graphic novel that they created, and they gave everyone just kind of a snapshot, and after the whole class got to go through, everyone, you know, went on Seesaw to read the novels, and it was just so special, and you could feel the excitement and happiness of the kids, you know, right through the computer, which, you know, continues to impress me, the work that the teachers are doing with our students remotely. This is an example of a fifth grade class. This is Ms. Giordano's fifth grade class, and our, our fifth graders are in the middle of their Human Rights Unit, where they learn about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and read some texts that tie into different human rights issues, different time periods, different places around the world, and this class had just finished reading Esperance Rising, and they were doing a retelling of the story where children wrote different synapses of different chapters in the book, and Ms. Giordano created a really special event for them where they kind of went through the whole story again in the book and highlighted the different experiences that the characters had. So it was pretty special, and this year, even more than ever, I have to say that kids are talking about human rights, you know, not, not just in this class that I'm sharing here, but I've gotten several letters from kids telling me about how human rights are violated around the school in, in a way that just makes me really feel happy for them, you know, that they're applying this, and sometimes just shows me that they're thinking about it. And of course, I address everyone with kids as needed, and it makes me proud of them that they're taking their learning, and, you know, even though, I will say that human rights are not being violated around the school, just for the record, but they're making these connections to what they're learning, and it makes me just so proud of our fifth graders and the work that they're going to do as they move forward. And this is awesome. You probably already know this because I've seen it posted in a couple of different places, but when we returned to in-person learning, we returned to in-person, or we started up, I should say, in-person lesson groups at French Road. All of our kids had been on Zoom the entire year, so we decided to take the last, you know, couple of months of school and restructure what in-person learning looks like for our band and our orchestra, and this is not what we would typically do. We wouldn't put them all together in the cafeteria. It would be more like small lesson groups, but to give them the experience of playing with each other, our instrumental music teachers created an awesome plan to bring all of our kids together at different points throughout the day safely and using the proper PPE, as you can see in some of the pictures, to play as a group. And for many of our kids, this was the first time they had ever played with somebody else besides their classmates on Zoom, so very special, awesome to watch. It's so great to have the music in the building again, and all the kids carrying around their instruments again, all the things we haven't seen all school year. So it was actually a really nice way to wrap up instrumental music. It's still going on now through the end of the year, but it's a nice way for kids to have this experience as we wrap up fourth and fifth grade. And then Election Day, on our board election day, our students devote on a charity that they wanted to support in the spring, and these are the three choices they have elected to support Lollipop Farm by a lot of votes, so more to come about that, but we went through and talked about each one of the different organizations and how to support kids and people who are homeless and animals, and our students love having drives to support others, so we will wrap up the year with a collection for Lollipop Farm. More to come. And we did have our drive-through ice cream social and virtual Fraz visits a couple weeks ago. A couple of pictures here of students that were coming through the parking lot. We had a lot of people come, more than we expected, which was great, but we had our Netsons truck there and many, many Fraz families, and then we sent out a video that highlighted each classroom at French Road, each special area, and I put a couple of screenshots there so you can just see, kids were just waving, saying hello, welcome to our classroom, and if, it was really nice because families got to just have a sneak peek. They haven't been in a school for the most part this year. Some of our families have never been in the school, our third grade families, so it was nice to be able to share what our school looks like and what kids are experiencing every day for us. I wanted to share some updates about our extended studies service model that has shifted, and we just shared this at our faculty meeting last week, but I thought it was important to share with everyone else as well because this was as a result of the program evaluation last year around extended studies, and we have shifted our third grade model to a more flexible model with the support and leadership of our extended studies teacher, Renee Whidore. Now we are servicing kids in a different way at third grade, which aligns more to the methods that are followed at Council Rock. So as our students have moved up to third grade this year, nothing really looks different to them, but it looks a bit different to our teachers at French Road. We have had three different opportunities for children to rotate in through the extended studies program around their interests, around particular topics that Mrs. Whidore has put together. At fourth and fifth grade this year, we kept our traditional model, but as the students grow up in French Road, we will outgrow that program, so we'll follow them up. So next year, third and fourth, and the following year, third, fourth, and fifth grade. So Mrs. Whidore has been just phenomenal with that. It has gone over very well, lots of positive feedback. She's updated some of the projects that our students have worked on, and even through remote learning, which is how ESS services were delivered for the bulk of the school year until we came back together, we have gotten so much positive feedback from our students, and especially our third graders, which is great to hear because they're kind of living through our new model for the first time. So just some feedback that Mrs. Whidore shared around students and families and staff, but lots of positive feedback and also some small tweaks we've made along the way as we continue to make this better for next year. And upcoming events at French Road. Again, just like Council Rock, we have an early release day, and we will follow the same model that we do for cohorts that we release, just starting a little bit earlier in the day. We will have a, we usually have a Memorial Day Assembly at French Road on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, but we are still going to have it, it's just virtual. So we'll actually send that home with families too, because we've recorded it and can send the link out, so actually everyone can enjoy that at home too, which will be nice. No school on Monday for Memorial Day, and we are taking our fourth graders to Genesee Country Village Museum and our fifth graders to Seabreeze. So we're very excited in that the fourth grade field trip came up fast, we decided that we could pull it off, and we're doing it, so we're really excited about that, and the most, the people who are most excited are the kids, which is awesome. And then we're hosting some picnics at the end of the year. We're going to bring all our third and fourth grade remote learners to French Road together for a picnic, and then we will bring all of our fifth graders in person and remote together for an end of the year picnic as well. So hard to believe we're thinking about the end of the school year, but we're, we are ready, and we're ready to celebrate all the hard work the kids have done this year. That's it for Fraz. Thanks.
Thank you so much for sharing, Allison, and I mean, it's just great. It strikes, I think, all of us to be able to see, first of all, smiling faces on kids. So some of the activities now without masks, to be able to see them smiling, what a treat. And, you know, the, the ability for them to get back to some instrumental music through masks with horns covered and, but, you know, they're making it work, and teachers and kids are making it work, and it's just fantastic. And, you know, again, looking at year-end activities that you are able to hold, many of them very, very, I mean, the, the field trips, very normal. I know everything will be safe and socially distant, and certain groups, it won't be as crowded at Seabreeze as it normally would, for example, and things like that, but, but to be able to squeeze some of that normal year out of this year is just tremendous, and again, continued thanks to everybody involved to make it work, so, you know, thank you very much. And on to Twelve Quarters Middle School, Principal Jim Nunez.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here with you all. Take a second to share my screen. So along with the transitions, yesterday I had the opportunity to meet with our fifth graders at French Road, and that was really fun to be able to get into the classrooms and, and get some of their questions about the, about their transition to middle school, and it's always fun to know that the biggest, most pressing questions on their mind are, one, will we have lunch with our friends, and what is the free class we get during the day? Those free classes meaning their study halls. So good thing we're getting world language back and making some other adjustments to our schedule to minimize those free periods for them. So here, we'll start off with our family consumer science classes. They've been working on recipes, but also found a way to kind of add a nice twist to recipes and cooking, and they asked students, what would a recipe of you look like? So students created a recipe based on their likes and their interests, and I thought one was a quite particularly interesting where the student wrote, "The recipe of themselves would be seven pinches of brown eyes, two pairs of dancing feet, three and a half gallons of kindness, four days of family time, three hours of New York Knicks basketball, three teaspoons of responsibility, five cups of caring," and a whole lot of thinking. So that was quite a good recipe for that child. And here we have some other examples of that, but they were really nice, well put out in the hallways, and really happy to see that work taking place out there. Here are sixth grade students are working on Greek gods and goddesses, so they had a nice display of modern day work being advertised with, you know, creations through the Greek gods and goddesses, so that was really nice to see out in the hallways as well. Along with the sixth grade here, six-word memoirs, which I found very interesting. So here they were capturing feelings, emotions, or special moments in six words, and so it was really nice to see some here. You see up there, you know, the, their topic was earbuds, so earbuds and press play feelings found, so it's a nice way to express themselves in a limited number of words. I found that to be quite interesting and very, you know, a great way to express themselves, and each child did it differently. So it was really nice to see, you know, here studying, they hate studying, studied, and still hate studying, so at least they're doing it, but expressing themselves in a little bit of discontent while they're there. All right? This was a nice work in seventh grade social studies. Can teachers be overthrown? It was a great debate done, and this is Deckman's class there, and so it was a well-balanced debate on yes and no, and had some great arguments going back and forth as to whether they were, can be overthrown, but I think the prevailing sentiment was no, they cannot be overthrown, so we're happy with that overall judgment from the class. For language department, finding ways for students to put their learnings and writings together. Here are Spanish gifts and invitations and, you know, writing what they would like for themselves, expression themselves through the Spanish language, along with trips around the world, and them writing descriptive, detailed trips that they've taken with their families. French classes are designing their homes, towns, and chores, so it was nice for them again to put language into the written form and expressing themselves that way. Our music department had students having, expressing themselves in personal meanings of music, so many of them are just through poetry or different ways of talking how music has been meaningful to them in their lives, along with some other examples here, all of it bringing music, bringing joy to them, so it was great to have that. Some upcoming events that we have, June 5th, we have our eighth grade bonfire for our eighth grade students, along with our Seabreeze trip on June 21st. We're taking all three grade levels on the same day to Seabreeze, along with the opportunity for our sixth graders this year to go to their outdoor ed education program at the Y. So we're very happy that we were able to put that together for them in a very So we're very happy that we were able to put that together for them in a very short period of time. So we're still planning that out, but the details have started to go out. So we'll be looking at June 8th and June 10th for them. So they'll get a full program absent the sleepover. So it's nice that we'll be able to get all the activities in that they normally would have without the sleepover. So I think that's a real good compromise for them to get that experience and to get it while they're sixth graders. And lastly here, we've got a nice few nights of summer music concerts out on the athletic fields at TCMS. So we're very happy to have all of our musical groups, our corps, our orchestras, being able to perform for families and friends outdoors and to be able to put their hard work to use and be able to showcase their talents, where they've had very limited opportunities to do so this year. And lastly, you know, who's counting? Walking down the halls, all of a sudden we see the countdown to the last day, but you know, no one's counting, but someone is somewhere in the art department. So that was a nice to see out there. And so with that, that is the end of that. Any questions?
Thanks, Jim. Again, you know, looking at the year-end activities, especially making that work. I didn't, I didn't realize until I just saw the concerts outside, the outdoor set of concerts. That's fantastic to be able to do that. I just wonder, I don't know, Governor Lou or somebody, do we have, where are we now on outdoor events in terms of attendance and masking? Can, can friends and neighbors attend those concerts masked and distanced or not? I mean, what is our policy?
Masks, 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 yes. Masks are still required, so is distance. But everything has changed relative to who can come. It is events right now, under 500 people do not require documentation of vaccination, a negative test, or at least from isolation. And then for school events, and then depending on the event, it has to do with venue size. And if you're going to go above a certain number, then requiring those. But we're very excited that our end-of-year events, prom, ball, bonfire, outdoor concerts, et cetera, will not require those items. Graduation, a much larger event at this point, still will require that. And high school families are aware of that. Tom or Jim or Lou, did I report that correctly? Or are there any other details you'd want to point out?
No, I think it's really just graduation that's going to be subjected to all of the documentation and the COVID testing and proof of documentation for a variety of things.
And consistent with everything that we're doing, that's based on the state's regulations, not our choices, including the masking issue, which is the state has still not changed their guidance relative to schools.
Yep. Yeah, thank you very, I just wondered, you know, we've talked about that internally and just the difference, the changes that happen nearly daily in terms of outdoor and the venue and sizes and capacities. And then what, what that entails in terms of whether you have Excelsior Pass downloaded and can prove, or you need it. I didn't, I wasn't quite clear on the numbers, the threshold, so thank you.
And that's changed, right? Because initially prom and ball were going to require, okay.
It did change within the past week or so, so stay tuned.
Who knows what happens next week?
Tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Now, Dr. Tom Hall, Brighton High School.
All right. Evening, everybody. Home of the Bruins, if you don't know, we've changed our mascot. You're going to see it all over the building come graduation, outside, inside, and on the turf for graduation. We're very excited. Few things to report at the end of the year. So we are having a modified Spring Fest. And I want to give a huge shout out to the Music Production Club. It's made up of all students. Howard Dennis is the advisor. The club met with me back in the, I don't know, middle of winter, when we had no idea what was going to happen still. And you know, we had just made the announcement about the Bruin being our new mascot. And they had an idea for Spring Fest of doing a rap song. And it's, 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 it's really, it's pretty cool. They're just about done with it. And on Spring Fest, which I'll get to at the end of the meeting, we're going to release what this new Bruin song is, and it's entitled, "It's a Great Day to Be a Bruin." So it's, it's got a lot of different stars in it. You can see Teresa Moser here, recording part of her piece of the music, and they're putting it all together. There's probably about 25 different faculty members and then the Music Production Club students who came up with the lyrics. And it's got Brighton believes qualities in it. It's just really something. I think we're going to probably be able to use that for many years to come when it comes to student events and getting some enthusiasm and brewing excitement in the, in the crowd. So stay tuned and we'll put it on the YouTube channel for the district and hopefully Dan will publicize it for us because it is solely their work. So there's no artistry contracts that we're breaking or breaking any rules with somebody else's song. It's totally their creation. So very excited about that. That'll be coming. We also have many activities still going on. We approved our outdoor club, has many different things they've been doing this spring. They went to Rock Ventures. They'll be going to the Bristol Mountain and doing a ropes course in May. And that's when Mr. Porta and other advisors come along, but they've been pretty active in trying to, you know, keep some fun things that are make school that much more exciting outside of the academics. So outdoor club has been pretty busy, along with athletics. We had our senior lawn sign day. You can see those signs all over Brighton now. We have all of our leftover ones out in front of the high school, you know, cheering on our seniors in 2021. I want to thank the counselors, administrators. We did it on a Wednesday, put all the signs out for our seniors and some we woke up to come out to take pictures. And they had a, you know, it's been nice. That tradition will probably continue into the future, I imagine. We also had our senior decision day. We had students who are going into the military, students going into the trades, students going to two-year schools, four-year schools, celebrating everybody. They got to fill out a sheet saying, "I decided to do," and whatever it is. And they hung those up outside the counseling office. They got a treat and just took some pictures and just celebrated them. And the scene, the signs are back in the cafeteria welcoming, and we have more inclusive signs than ever. We have a couple of kids who are going to be electricians, and we're very excited about that too. And others going on to, again, four-year schools and two plus two programs. So thanks to Courtney Stern and the counselors for planning that day. Something this year you probably heard, you know, we had a few, three different administrations of the AP exams this year. Three different time periods, never been done before. We actually administered all of our language tests for the first time at Central Office, and that was a really nice environment. We're probably going to continue to try to offer those language exams over there. It made it a very nice atmosphere. We had 13 exams offered May 3rd through May 14th, 10 exams offered May 17th through May 28th. One exam will be offered on June 3rd, our AP psych exam. 20 of the exams were traditional paper and three were done digitally. And they are almost over. We just have the psych exam now. Otherwise, all the AP exams are over. Sarah Jacob's been doing a fantastic job wrapping that up with Sandy Hellman and the kids, I'm sure relieved. We had a lot of kids take the exams this year. And our digital exams went very well. And I want to thank the tech department, Mike Leener, Eric Jordan, Pete Marion, Gene Bohm, for all their help. Nurses Day, we had a really nice celebration of our nurses. I think this year we went all out because certainly this year, more than probably ever, we needed our nurses every single day, changed their hours to be there when the kids arrived and until well after they went home in case we had any sort of COVID concerns as soon as kids walked in the building. And our two nurses in school, Martha Botany, Botony, and Jana Fitzpatrick and Kate Valdez, of course, who is now remote, working for the district, but will come back next year in job share. But just thank you to all of our nurses, did a fantastic job in our building and I'm sure in the other buildings as well. Our Nancy Beck Grant, we had more money provided to us to frame artwork. And we actually had student prints. They did faces and, and drawings of the, just above the shoulder area. And we have a whole line as you come in through the main entrance over to the main office. You can see a variety, diverse, very diverse looking students lining our hallways, very exciting. Kids did such a great job and just wanted to get those framed and up as soon as possible. I shared the historical failure data with you back in quarter one, quarter two, and I'll do that with quarter three. But if you remember back, quarter one, we had over double the failure rate in our first quarter for students in remote and hybrid. Quarter two, we were about four percentage points above our typical failure rate, at 17% with kids failing one or more classes. But not that it's exciting to have kids fail, but it is exciting to see that our, our historical numbers for quarter three, which is typically a little higher, is back to somewhat of a normal period of time. And I want to just give a shout out to all the teachers, our support people, counselors, everybody who's done a ton of work to try to work with our students, kind of understand the, you know, the hybrid schedule that we're in, the stressors that are part of it, giving kids the opportunities to make up work, not take off late points, not count zeros. A lot of transformation of thinking and approaches to grading took place this year. And, and our, our failure rate, I think for this quarter really showed, we're about where we are in a normal year when other districts in the third quarter have, have gone up. So I feel really good about that. We certainly want all of our kids to pass. But to see that at least the level come doubling from first quarter to being about the same in the third was definitely a relief for us. And one thing to note, so 14.8% of all students failed one or more for the third quarter. 27% of our remote kids failed one or more, and 12.7% of our hybrid kids. So you know, with our remote model, we have several students who are very successful, doing extremely well. And the teachers are doing incredible work. But there, you know, there are just some students that just it has not clicked for them. And for one reason or another, they had to stay remote. So we're really looking forward to hopefully working with them in person for summer school with lower numbers that they'll be able to be in the building with us in summer school, and we can hopefully get them on track, at least someone on track for the next, next year and the next grade level and moving ahead. So I thank Debbie Baker for her support with summer school and Sean Metz for getting it going. Student events, so a lot of things happening here too, just like in the other buildings. Glad to see so many field trips going out. I missed the media, the visit to Council Rock to say hello to the new second graders. That was always a fun time. But here we go with our end-of-year events. You'll see it's going to look like a giant circus out in front of, or out in back of Brighton High School, starting June 4th to June 21st. We have two large tents going up in the back of the building. And they'll be there for about three weeks for all of our different events, our awards ceremony, senior ball, which is on June 5th, fashion banquet. We're going to have a very nice meal, ice cream, social, yolk and he's coming. And we're, they're making the Sundays to order based on what students want. But we'll be having everybody under the tent, rain or shine, looking to be some great activities for the end of the year. Modified Spring Fest coming up, prom. We do have some Regents exams to stick in there. Oops. I want to say that June 18th is our last day of classes for the Tuesday, Friday cohort. And that's going to be our Spring Fest number one. And we have Spring Fest number two on Monday, the 21st for our Monday, Thursday cohort. And that will be the last day of classes for them. Graduation on the turf, first time ever, hopefully last time ever. Rain date is June 23rd, but it's 7:00 PM on the turf. Everybody here is, will be coming to that. As our board members, you'll be sitting on the stadium seats. And our students will be on the turf along with their parents. I want, there's a ton of people going into plan, just planning this event. It's, it's shaping up to be a really nice time. And here's just a map of what it's going to look like. Our family seating will be all over the turf and on the track. Our students will be sitting right in front of the stadium on chairs. Our parents and families are being asked to bring either camping chairs or blankets to sit in 150 square foot spot. We'll have 312 spots marked out, plus extra seating if there are people who want extra tickets. The stage is going to be the stadium, and you know how hard those seats are. So if you still want a seat from PTSA, I know they're selling them. We have parking on the field, parking at the church. They graciously given us the parking spots. You can park for free out in the neighborhoods west of Brighton, along with the middle school and the high school lots, of course. So that is it. June is going to be a very busy month at Brighton High School, along with, I'm sure, with all the other buildings from what it sounds. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. And yeah, I mean, when you look at all of those high school related events and, you know, the trying to find space and make it work within the guidance that changes. I mean, again, everyone's done a fantastic job. We look forward to being able to celebrate our seniors with a graduation ceremony again. So that's fantastic that everybody was able to get together and make that work. And, and tremendous effort on that failure rate situation, bringing that back around, reaching out to kids and families. We know that all of you have been doing it in your buildings. All of our teachers have been working hard to stay connected with students and families, whether they're remote or hybrid or now in person. And it's just been a tremendous effort by everybody this year. So again, thank you so much, Tom, and all four of you building leaders. So we'll move on with a few other items of business this evening. First of all, board members, may we have a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Board of Education meeting calendar? So moved. Moved by Larry and seconded by Sue, I think, on that one. Does anybody have any questions? That's been posted. It's the meeting dates beginning in July 1st for the reorg all the way through next, the end of next June. So if there's no further another question or comment, will all in favor, aye? Any opposed? So that schedule is approved, six in favor and none opposed. We also tonight have for first read approval, two different policies. May we have a motion, please, for approval, first read of policy 3003000, Community Relations, transgender and gender non-conforming?
So moved.
Second.
That would be a motion by Karen, seconded by Christina. This policy, which was posted for tonight's agenda meeting, we have, it's a six-page policy. It's an update to the, the policy around transgender and gender non-conforming to align with a number of FERPA changes and Title IX changes, education law changes. Specifically, the majority of update in this particular version has to do with restrooms and locker room facilities and that type of thing. So again, traditionally it's a first read. It will come back. It will be open for further review, comment, and will come back as a second read. And at that point, if approved, become full policy. Does anybody have anything to ask, add questions, comments? This evening?
And Mark, I would just point out that we have a very long history in the district relative to this particular policy, transgender and gender non-conforming, that could best be summed up by saying, you are who you say you are. We love, care, and support you for whomever that is. And you tell us and we will make that work and support you. And this does not change that at all. In fact, reinforces that and provides additions just based on changes in law. So nothing has changed relative to our commitment to all human beings in our school community.
That's a great point, Kevin. And you know, it is a six-page policy. It's very, very inclusive and very detailed and specific. And you are correct, sometimes we forget, we, we worked originally on policy a long time ago. And we were one of the first in the area, not that there's something special for that, other than we had a recognition. We worked with a number of families and students in, in the community and outside experts and worked through policy service and brought things forward and have continued to update that as regards to law or regulation or our own individual experiences within our buildings and as we evolve. So thank you very much for your leadership on that and all of our four building principals again, that apply this type of work every single day in your building. So any other further comment, questions from board members? All in favor of first read? Any opposed? And first read is approved, six in favor and none opposed. May we now have a motion, please, to approve first, first read on policy 3422? Again, under the Community Relations section, Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education?
So moved.
Second.
That was a motion by Sue, I think, and seconded by Christina. Again, folks, we've talked about this previously. The State Education Department, the Board of Regents, Chancellor, Commissioner, have suggested and worked very strongly this year that all school districts make sure they include an equity, inclusivity, and diversity in education policy. The wording and the phrase, phraseology, this, this comes really through a lot of efforts at the state level, NISCUS, NISBA, State Ed, and also our partners that we've been working with now, NYU, Steinhardt School, and the folks that we know individually were actually involved in crafting this as a sample policy. So, I will tell you that I believe that so much of what's written in this three-page policy is where we are and where we're going, but it's, it's important that it be in print and in, in our online policy manual and be our intentional about what we're, where we are and what we're doing. So, again, first read, we'll leave it open for comment, review by anyone, and we wish to take a look at it. It'll be posted. And any question or comment, we'll, we'll certainly take that and bring it back. Does anyone have anything further on that policy this evening? Kevin, Debbie, or Lou, do you have anything to add, to add further to that?
I think you've said it all. I, which I guess as usual is not going to stop me from saying something else, but I think it is, you're, you're very right. It is a, it is representative of the work that is happening in the district and that will continue to happen. It really buttresses that, supports what has already been at play for us for a long time in terms of who we are and what we plan on doing, and provides us the policy framework to support our initiatives going forward, and really to hold us accountable for that and to continue us on that path. The policy has that bookending advantage to it that allows us to continue to think about the work structurally and within the district and make sure that we are adhering to that as well. So, thank you.
Very well said. Thank you very much. Board members, anything further on it? Tonight is a first read? All in favor? Any opposed? That is for a policy 3,422 is approved as a first read. Six in favor and none opposed. And we also have an item of business this evening. May we please have a motion to approval, for approval to execute letter of intent in a commission agreement with regard to the sale of what's known as the Brookside School? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. The board had, let me first preface this to the public. All of the documentation that we're about to discuss, some of it's posted. The rest of it will be posted. We made, we passed a resolution back in February to explore the potential sale of the Brookside School. That has taken quite a bit of time through all of the legal matters and all the due diligence work that has needed to be done. We are now at a point where the board is being asked tonight to, to execute this resolution related to the sale of the school. So, that all finally came together in paperwork later, late yesterday and today. So, we will have some discussion here, but we will also make sure that all this material is posted for the public to review. So, essentially, the resolution that we are, that we are asked to approve, I'm going to just read briefly. Whereas the Board of Education at its regular business meeting, February 23rd, 2021, passed the following resolutions. Property formerly known as Brookside Elementary School is of no further use or value to the district. No longer considered a viable option to reopen as a public school. Board authorizes the necessary steps. Proceed for taking all the necessary action to pursue the sale or transfer of title of such property, and the board approves ordering of an appraisal of the value of the parcel in the district by a duly authorized appraising agent as determined by the Superintendent of Schools. So, we had a party that had approached us by state law. We had to go through a number of legal required steps, one of those being an appraisal of the property. And that process has, has come to this point now. So, therefore, the resolve, we resolve as follows that the Board of Education reaffirms that the property formerly known as Brookside Elementary School is of no further use to the district and is no longer considered a viable option to reopen as a public school. The board authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute the letter of intent to purchase 1666 Witten Road, Rochester, New York, presented to us by Endeavor Real Estate Group, dated January 5th, 2021. And the board further authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute the commission agreement with the Endeavor Real Estate Group not to exceed 6% of the sale or exchange price of the property. And then there are backing materials around that to be included and posted also. Does anyone have anything further, Lou, that you, do we need to add anything further to that, or Kevin? Any board member? Let's say it's Lou and Kevin also. Anything further that you two might wish to add to that conversation?
No, I, I think that, again, I think you've summarized it well. It was an unexpected opportunity and a very good one from a financial perspective for the district in terms of the potential capital liability for the building long-term relative to the opportunity to capitalize on it as an asset and gain resources for the district. We recognize, however, that that displaces important tenants, number one. And we've been in contact with those tenants for quite a long time, talking about that possibility and trying to support other efforts for them to gain space other places. You know, we, we certainly regret that aspect of it and don't mean to take that lightly at all because that's something important. However, that responsibility for each of those tenants to find space for their programs lies with them, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to the district, and this is an opportunity to capitalize on that. However, the other aspect of this is our responsibility to the neighborhood. And so, we're glad to say, and as people will see in the resources that are available, that the buyer is the Talmudic Institute, which would be a similar use of the property to its original intent and to the way the buildings and grounds are currently constructed. Therefore, I think presenting really the least disruption to the environment possible for a transfer of the property. Again, consistent with the original use of the property and in terms of the space in the building, we don't anticipate or have knowledge that those things will change or that zoning would have to change, nothing like that, which I know is a concern for those in the community. So, you know, we really feel like that is, is the best option going forward and have been limited in our ability to discuss that openly with the community because it is a real estate transaction and, of course, a a contractual one that we have obligations within that arrangement as well. So, what we are looking forward to is providing more information to the community in short order, particularly to the neighborhood, and then being open to questions and, and feedback and thoughts so that we can provide every answer possible so people understand what could be happening in their neighborhood. Lou, Larry, care to add anything to that or provide any additional detail?
Thing that I would add is that this is not a closing document, that this is just the next step in the process, and the buyer will do some due diligence now. So, it, it just keeps the process moving along, and there'll be additional documentation, you know, forthcoming once that due diligence is, is performed.
Point that Lou makes, this is not approval of a sale. This is approval of us to go forward and react in a positive way to the letter of intent sent to us by the broker involved for the client, if you will. That we were responding in a positive way, that we'd be, we would be willing to enter an agreement to sell that property, but it's not approval of a final sale yet. So, thank you, Lou, for clarifying. I'm sorry, Larry?
No, that's all right. It, you know, there are days when it seems like a long time ago, and then there were days when, when it seems like it was yesterday, but we, as a community, made a decision to expand Council Rock. And that sort of, if you will, sealed the fate for Brookside. That was another alternative we looked at. So, it doesn't hold any great use for the district, and it's not our goal to be landlord. So, this, this is the right thing to do. We have fiduciary responsibility, as was pointed out. But, you know, the expansion of Brook, I'm sorry, the expansion of Council Rock sort of let us know that this facility isn't part sort of our master planning anymore. So, this is consistent with the decision we made as a community a few years ago.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments from anyone? All right, then, hearing nothing further, I will call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That approval of that resolution to execute the letter of intent is approved. Six in favor and none opposed. So, thank you very much. Last item of business on this, on the official schedule this evening, fundraising activities. May we have a motion, please, to approve those two fundraising activities as listed?
So moved.
Motion by Sue.
Second.
Second by Christina. Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. McGowan, anything further this evening for the good of the order or otherwise?
No, just a quick comment regarding, you know, on Mondays, I put out a Just So You Know video, and I would just take a look at that. To be concerned about significant increases in antisemitism being experienced throughout the country, and as we have pointed out in the past regarding calls for the protection and care and support of many individual communities, most recently the Asian-American Pacific Islander community, that this is a concern for us, and we would encourage community members to reach out to us should they be experiencing that difficulty, and we can provide support, and it is a continued point of emphasis for us to, to both be aware of, but to also combat hate in all forms. Other than that, we made the announcement, of course, this week that we would remain in hybrid through the remainder of the year. We're actively involved in planning for what a full reopening for five days would look like for next year, and advocacy around what would need to change from a policy perspective to make sure that that can happen. But see, no reason why we wouldn't be reopening fully, and many of the comments in the media from either the governor or others throughout the state certainly support that notion as well. Beyond that, thanks to everybody for their support with regard to the budget vote. With an 81% passing rate, we greatly appreciate support of those in the community. And our respectful of the 19% who voted no as well, and would always like to best understand their perspective and how we can be stewards of everybody's resources, including those that feel differently about that. And thank all of you for support, your support in that process, Lou's financial leadership. And congratulations, of course, to our board member Christina Lee, who will be able to continue her service on this team, and our new board member, Astron Winter, who will join us beginning July 1st. So, thanks to all of you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kevin. Board members, anything further this evening? And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I remind folks that we next meet on June 15th, which is our final scheduled board meeting of the year, and that is a wonderful night because it is also tenure recognition night. So, we look forward to that every year in awarding tenure to an outstanding group of folks. So, with that, please, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and someone else that I didn't hear, and seconded by Karen. All in favor? Aye. And anyone opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. We are adjourned for this evening, and have a great rest of the evening. Thank you.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.